Ready?
Good evening, and welcome to the City Council Norman Utilities Authority, Norman Municipal Authority, and Norman Tax Increment Finance Authority meeting of March 28th, 2023. Madam Clerk, will you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Ball?
Here.
Councilmember Schuler?
Here.
Councilmember Lynn?
Here.
Councilmember Grant?
Here.
Councilmember Tortorello?
Here.
Councilmember Foreman?
Here.
Councilmember Holman?
Here.
Councilmember Peacock?
Here.
Mayor Baicola?
Here. Thank you, ma'am. Would you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item number one, approval of minutes. Consideration of the minutes as follows. Meeting minutes of October 11th, 2022, City Council Conference Minutes of January 10th, 2023, City Council Minutes of January 10th, 2023, Norman Utilities Authority Minutes of January 10th, 2023, Norman Municipal Authority Minutes of January 10th, 2023, Norman Tax Increment Finance Authority Minutes of January 10th, 2023, City Council Study Session Minutes of January 17th, 2023, City Council Conference Minutes of January 24th, 2023, Community Planning and Transportation Committee many, many, meeting minutes of January 26th, 2023, and City Council Special Meeting Minutes of March 14th, 2023. I need a motion to approve the minutes, please. I have a motion second on the floor, and it's to approve the minutes. Council members, you may cast your votes. I don't have a screen. There we go.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Item two. A proclamation proclaiming Saturday, April 22, 2023, as Earth Day and March 22, May 13, 2023, as Green Norman, Norman Echo Month in the city of Norman. I need a motion to acknowledge the receipt of the proclamation. I have a motion, and second, the motion on the floor is to accept receipt of the proclamation. Council members, you may cast your votes. Oh, I did.
The proclamation was approved unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. A proclamation of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, proclaiming Saturday, April 22nd, 2023, as Earth Day and March 22nd through May 13th, 2023, as Green Norman Echo Month in the city of Norman. Whereas Senator Gaylord Nelson created Earth Day to increase environmental awareness and to highlight devastate, the devastating effects of pollution to our air, water, and soil to the nation, and whereas 22 million Americans celebrated the first Earth Day on April 22nd, 1970, whereas the city of Norman Parks and Recreation Utilities and Public Works Departments have planned a series of events to celebrate this important milestone and provide Norman residents an opportunity to get involved, and whereas Saturday, April 22nd, 2023, marks the 53rd anniversary of Earth Day, and whereas Saturday, March 22nd, through Saturday, March, excuse me, through Saturday, May 13th, is recognized as Green Norman Echo Month with free activities to be held at various locations across the city, and whereas Sunday, April 23rd, 2023, from noon to 5:00 p.m., is the city of Norman's 19th Annual Earth Day Festival to be held at Reeves Park, and whereas we encourage the community to come to be a part of these free public events and learn new things about the world around us. Now, therefore I, Mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim April 22nd, 2023, as Earth Day and March 22nd through May 13th, 2023, as Green Norman Echo Month in the city of Norman, and encourage our citizens to make a difference in our community, to think, reduce, reuse, recycle, replenish, restore, refresh, replant, rebuild, repurpose, and respect. Is Rachel Proctor here to do that? That's more ours than I can do that.
You got it. They're in work.
There you go. Would you like to say something from the podium?
Our Environmental Services and Sustainability Manager, Michelle Loudenback, couldn't be here tonight. So on her behalf, and the rest of the Utilities Department, the Environmental Control Advisory Board, and all other environmentalists, big and small, in the city of Norman, I just want to thank our council and our mayor for recognizing this year's Earth Day Festival and Green Norman Echo Month, and consequently investing in our future. Gaylord Nelson, the founder of Earth Day, which was first held in 1970, once said, "The ultimate test of man's conscience may be his willingness to sacrifice something today for future generations whose words thanks will not be heard." It's our hope that Norman not only becomes a more sustainable community, but that we become an example for how to work together to combat environmental concerns for other municipalities in Oklahoma and the rest of the country. We have a lot of events scheduled until May 13th, from cleanup events, tours, waste collection, and our Artful Inlets installation, and we recently celebrated World Water Day on March 22nd with an event at our water treatment plant, which highlights the importance of fresh water such as Lake Thunderbird. Everyone is invited to come celebrate, participate, volunteer, and learn at any and all of these events. For anyone who wants to learn more about these events, they're listed on greennorman.org. Thank you.
Thank you. Item number three, a proclamation proclaiming Sunday, April 23rd, 2023, as Arbor Day in the city of Norman. I need a motion to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation?
Second.
I have a motion, and second, the motion on the floor is to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation. Your vote.
The proclamation was adopted unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. A proclamation of the mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, proclaiming Sunday, April 23rd, 2023, as Arbor Day in the city of Norman. Whereas Oklahoma has recognized Arbor Day through the observance and ceremonies for more than 100 years, and whereas, excuse me, and whereas we recognize the importance of planting trees to beautify our parks and public places around our homes and businesses, and whereas we recognize the environmental, social, and economic benefits of trees such as providing shade, creating a sense of community, and visually pleasing neighborhoods, reducing home heating and cooling costs, reducing air pollution, noise pollution, and soil erosion, and enhancing property value and economic vitality of business areas, and whereas it is the purpose of Arbor Day to encourage the planting of trees in urban and rural areas, promote the proper management of trees, and to remember the many benefits of what we receive from trees. Whereas, and whereas Norman has been awarded for the 20th consecutive year Tree City USA status by the Arbor Day Foundation, and whereas the city of Norman Parks and Recreation and City Tree Board has scheduled an Arbor Day's observance Sunday, April 23rd, 2023, at 3:00 p.m. in Reeves Park with a tree planting and presentation. Now, therefore I, Mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim Sunday, April 23rd, 2023, as Arbor Day in the city of Norman, and encourage all citizens to observe Arbor Day by planting an Oklahoma proven tree for the benefit of all citizens and that of future generations. Is Mr. Menze here? There you are. You're all cleaned up. I don't recognize you. There you go, Don. Would you like to say something?
Mariah's gonna say a few words. She's the first female master arborist in Oklahoma. She's the only master arborist. There's only four master arborists in the whole state, and she's the only one in central Oklahoma. So she's gonna say a few words.
Thanks, Dan. We have built many parts of this city on the strength of trees. Each piece of lumber in this room has a rated strength and weight capacity, which speaks to years of adaptation and challenges experienced by the individual tree that produced it. But a tree's beauty is not only in the strength of its wood. It also has the capacity to change, adapt, and course correct with all parts working in tandem to support the whole. Anytime a tree is subjected to stress or pressure such as ice, wind, pests, pathogens, in as little as five minutes, the tree will begin responding to the problem. This rapid response can include beginning to build wood infrastructure to withstand the additional weight or force on their limbs while the ice is still present. They may send sap to engage in actual chemical warfare with insects and pathogens, or they may begin to actively transpire, which is similar to the way humans sweat to reduce heat and dissipate heat. They cannot run or hide from the forces that threaten them, and they have adapted over millennia to face these in a beautifully elegant dance of cooperation between all the interconnected parts. Having grown up in Norman, I have watched our city respond to many stresses and challenges over the past decades, and there have been many. I am filled with gratitude when I consider the effort that our community puts into meeting these challenges with a gentle hand towards nature and the good sense to protect our green infrastructure. I could fill this speech with statistics on how trees lower crime rates, increase respiratory and mental health, reduce costs from stormwater runoff, or increase property value, but instead, I'd like to simply say that trees, like our Norman community, are capable of great and beautiful growth. In that spirit, it gives me great pleasure to accept the Earth Day proclamation on behalf of the Norman Tree Board. Thank you.
Item number four. A proclamation proclaiming the week of April 9th through 15th, 2023, as National Telecommunicator Week in the city of Norman. I need a motion to acknowledge the receipt of the proclamation. A motion and second, motion on second is, the motion is on the floor to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation. Council members, you may cast your votes.
The proclamation was approved unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. A proclamation of the mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, proclaiming the week of April 9th through 15th, 2023, as National Telecommunicator Week in the city of Norman. Whereas in 1991, congressional resolution named the second full week in April of every year is National Telecommunicator Week, and whereas emergencies can occur at any time or place that require the assistance of police, fire, or emergency medical services, and whereas 911 is the hotline for help for people in emergency situations, and the 911 call taker's voice is the first assurance that help is on the way, and whereas 911 professionals regularly meet the challenges of extremely stressful situations with calmness and efficiency, and whereas when an emergency, when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the protection of life and the preservation of property, and whereas the safety of these emergency responders is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the 911 communications center, and whereas public safety dispatchers in Norman are the 911 dispatchers, everyday superheroes, providing assistance before any other emergency services arrive on the scene, and whereas public safety dispatchers are the vital link for our emergency responders by monitoring their activities by radio and providing them with information ensuring their safety, and whereas public safety dispatchers contribute substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and the treatment of injuries and illnesses on a daily basis, and whereas each dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during performance of his or her daily job duties. Now, therefore I, Mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim the week of April 9th through 15th, 2023, as National Telecommunicator Week in the city of Norman in honor of the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our citizens, city citizens and emergency responders safe. Is Andrea Lewis here, or David Grisell? Who do I have? That's what I just said.
Andrea, Susan Bishop, David Grisell.
Oh, here they come.
Yeah. There you go.
There's the crew.
You had me scared. I thought you guys ran out on your own proclamation. Congratulations to all of you. You wanna, yeah?
Just wanted to tell you guys, thank you so much for recognizing. We are continuing our efforts to make our position recognized nationally as first responders so that we can aid dispatchers in getting assistance that they need, retirement that they need, and this is a huge step towards that. Thank you guys for recognizing the sacrifice that these workers make on a regular basis, missing holidays with their families, birthdays, games, sacrifice on a, on a daily basis to make sure that citizens of Norman are safe, and we enjoy making that sacrifice for the community, and we do appreciate the recognition. So, thank you.
We thank you. Only two more to go. Item number six, a proclamation proclaiming the week of April 9th through 15th, 2023, as National Animal Control Officer Appreciation Week in the city of Norman. I need a motion to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation. I have a motion, and second, the motion on the floor is to acknowledge the receipt of the proclamation. Council members, you may cast your votes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. A proclamation of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, proclaiming the week of April 9th through 15th, 2023, as National Animal Control Officer Appreciation Week in the city of Norman. Whereas National Animal Control Officer Appreciation Week is celebrated every second full week in April and is endorsed by the National Animal Care and Control Association, and whereas animal services are a key component of the city of Norman's quality of life, health, and safety, and whereas animal welfare officers respond to the calls of stray animals and deceased animals in, on, in and on our city streets, and whereas animal welfare officers seek justice. In the cases of abused, neglected, and abandoned animals, conduct humane investigations and bring helpless animals to safety and protect animals from abusers and people from dangerous animals, and whereas animal welfare officers encounter sick, lost, aggressive, and injured animals on a daily basis and work on public safety issues, perform bite investigations and rabies prevention activities, and whereas animal welfare officers educate the community on how to better care for their pets and offer resources for struggling citizens whose pets are a vital part of their families, and whereas every animal welfare officer has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of his or her daily job duties, and understands the importance of keeping pets and people together. Whereas animal welfare officers constantly struggle with emotionally and physically challenging situations in a profession that demands concentration, stamina, endurance, and clear mind, and dedicate their careers to protecting the welfare of vulnerable and helpless animals that have been rescued from injury, disease, and starvation. Now, therefore I, Mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim the week of April 9th through 15th, 2023, is the animal, is Animal Control Appreciation Week in the honor of the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep Norman citizens and animals safe. Is Ms. Kelly Robertson here? Good. And a puppy. Gotta have a puppy.
Three puppies for everyone.
Hi. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, council members. I'd just like to take a moment to recognize the importance of animal services for a city. Animal services is a key component to keeping a city healthy and a community healthy. We do so much more at animal welfare than help the animals. We help the people, and we like to, to put it as we're working on both ends of the leash. So I appreciate the proclamation. If we gotta share it with anybody, we'll share it with the dispatchers, and I'd like to take this moment to recognize not just Officer Sally, but the other four animal welfare officers that we have that serve our city. Thank you so much.
Okay. Item number six, a proclamation proclaiming the month of April, 2023, is Child Abuse Prevention Month in the city of Norman. I need a motion to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation? I have a motion, and second, the motion on the floor is to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation. Council members, you may cast your votes.
The motion was passed unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. A proclamation of the mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, proclaiming the month of April, 2023, as Child Abuse and Neglect Prevention Month in the city of Norman. Whereas the month of April has been declared National Child Abuse Prevention Month in our country, and whereas in 2022, Cleveland County reported 785 victims of child abuse and neglect. Whereas the Norman community provides children, children services on abuse and neglect issues, and are united in promoting advocacy for children, and whereas communities must make every effort to report victims of child abuse or neglect, and the Norman community serves, and the Norman community serves a number of children locally, and whereas effective child abuse prevention and education activities succeed because of the meaningful connections and partnerships created between all sectors of the community, and whereas the Norman community is invested in prevention and advocacy through education to schools, civic groups and churches, volunteer efforts to local organizations, and philanthropic contributions to assist child abuse response, treatment, and advocacy. Now, therefore I, Mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim the month of April, 2023, as Child Abuse and Neglect Prevention Month in the city of Norman, and incur, and urge all citizens to dedicate ourselves to the task of improving the quality of life for all children and families. Dr. Saheed Serrani?
I'm gonna use my cheat sheet, you guys. Thank you so much, Norman City Council and Mayor, for the proclamation recognizing the month of April as a Child Abuse Prevention Month. National Child Abuse Prevention Month, also known as Child Abuse Prevention Month in America, is an annual observance in the United States dedicated to raising awareness and prevention of child abuse. April has been designated Child Abuse Prevention Month in the United States since 1983. So for a long time that we have really have that in our, in our country. National Child Abuse Prevention Month recognizes the importance of the families and community working together to prevent child abuse and neglect. Through creating pinwheels, garden, posting ribbons, placing signs, wearing glue, and we communicate the importance of collaboration in helping to predict, to protect children and the strength in families. It is my honor to accept this proclamation as a representative of many nonprofit organization in Norman and Cleveland County area, but tonight specifically, I would like to give a tank to following nonprofit representative sitting in the room with us. Greg Roberts, Exchange Club, Andre D'Amli, Abbott House, Melissa Klink, Center of Children and Families, Donna Hooper, Open Heart Resource Room, Sherry Marzeco, South Centra Casa, Trey Roberts, Royal Family Kids Camp, Beverly DeWitt, Exchange Club, and I am Saheed Serrani from Bethesda. Thank you so very much for you guys. I appreciate you.
All right. Now I get to quit talking, and you start talking. Are there any council announcements? Ward one.
Yeah, I wasn't with it. There you go.
Okay. All right. Yeah, it's gonna be a busy weekend. Medieval Fair will be in town coming up, so I'm sure somebody else will say more about that, and if not, everybody here knows about the Medieval Fair, so not a whole lot to say there. I want to thank Mr. Mattingly for taking me on a tour of our sewer treatment plant and kind of giving me an update on our water lines and all that situation. I know my in-laws, if you live off Belmont Drive, a lot of new lines going in. It's an inconvenience, but I mean, it's gotta be done, and these new pipes that are going in, from what I understand, they'll last up to 100 years. And so, kind of piggyback on that, we're gonna have a vote coming up very soon to increase our water rate. And I know anytime you hear an increased rate, it's, oh my gosh, no, but I want you to think about what this increase will do. Right now, we're at the, surrounding communities, we're at the very bottom of what we charge our citizens for water. And even with this water rate increase, we're still gonna be way at the bottom. I think we're still gonna be like number 10 on the list out of all the surrounding communities. So, but what this is gonna do is, it's gonna improve our infrastructure, and a lot of people, especially when the tornado came through, we had a lot of waterline breaks. We've got some ongoing breaks even the past week or two in some other wards that I saw. So every time a waterline breaks, I mean, that's hundreds and thousands of gallons of water that we're wasting. When a waterline breaks, it's a business that's shut down. They can't wash their dishes. They can't provide a bathroom for their customers. That's water for your house. And I know how I am when I wake up in the morning and can't take a shower, and I know how my wife likes to yell at me when she can't take a shower, so. This water rate increase, we need it. So please think very hard and carefully when the vote does come up. It's gonna be a good thing for our city, and like I said, it's been 10 years since the last one, so you don't have to worry about it again, probably for at least another 10 years. Other than that, let's see, Sunday, April 2nd, at Colonial Park, just right there off Lindsay Street, we're gonna be having a park cleanup. So Mrs. Susan Spark Smith, she'll be leading that, and so I encourage you, they'll be meeting right there at the splash pad. And so I encourage you, they'll be meeting right there at the, uh, splash pad. So for the Frisbee Golf Course, it's gonna be from ten to noon. The city's gonna be providing trash bags, gloves, all that kind of stuff. Me and my family will be there, or me and my kids will be there, for sure. So I advise you to come out and, you know, just do a little bit to help beautify our city. And finally, on April first, uh, at the Antioch Community Church, also there on Lindsay, it's, um, thirteen thirty East Lindsay, they're gonna be doing the Norman Family Roundup, which is a Love Your Neighbor event. Uh, it's gonna be from five to seven P.M. They're gonna have free food, free pony rides, free games. Uh, so it's gonna be a great opportunity to bring the family out. And I want to highlight what these people do just a little bit more. Every Tuesday and Wednesday, after school from three to five, they do what's called a snacks, uh, snack and study. And it's open to all elementary-age kids. Uh, they even let, uh, middle schoolers come in, but that they're junior, uh, junior youth mentors when they come in. But what they do is, they help the kids study. They provide snacks after school. And every kid that goes home, they send home a boxed lunch. And so it helps families out. I mean, I don't have to fix dinner that night because my kids, they brought home Chick-fil-A this afternoon. So it's, it's an amazing thing that these people do. So I highly encourage you to go out there, check out this family roundup on, um, like I said, on Saturday, April first, from five to seven. And feel free to ask them about it because it's a great opportunity for the kids. And it, it helps a lot, so. And I believe, yep, that's all I have, so.
Council member?
I don't have any announcements tonight.
Thank you, ma'am. Council member?
Well, I've got a few. Uh, as I sit here, I do not know if this might be my last announcement because if you did not know, the city that I am representing right now is suing me. We go to court next week on the fifth to see if I still get to sit up here. So if this is my last opportunity, I'm gonna, I won't quietly haul you, but I'm gonna say a few things real quick. Um, first, I appreciate the opportunity that I've been given. Uh, humbly, I'm grateful for the opportunity to represent this city. Um, when we came up here, I'll tell you, my slogan was "The Change Norman Needs." Um, and boy, have we delivered on some change. If you look around up here, there's one person left from when we started this, this venture. We've tried to change the culture up here, tried to change how we're doing business. We've brought stuff back to our police. We got them funded and positions back and equipment and buildings. I would say that anything I ever said or set out to do that we have accomplished up here and we have done it from, from the minority. And when and if I leave next week, or whenever it is, I will walk out of here with my head held so high from what we've accomplished for this city and the change that we've made in this culture and how we're doing business. And there's, I think there's some more coming. There were some media over the weekend pointing out some of the flaws that we have in the city right now, um, in some of our departments. I hope that we can get that corrected as well. And when I leave here, whether it's next week or in July, man, I'll tell you, I'll just go back to, uh, you know, they're trying to remove me for being a judge. And since then, another city's hired me as a judge to come be their judge. It's been like the, it's been an all right thing, you know? So once I leave here, I'll go back to running two nonprofits, helping veterans and children and, uh, go back to, you know, all the other things I do to serve the community. So I hope nobody feels sorry for me. And if, if you're crossing your fingers, I hope to disappoint you next week because I still got some unfinished business left to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Council member?
Uh, I just want to say thank you to Councilmember Holman and former Councilmember Lee Hall, um, for joining me on the Center City Form Based Code Tour we took over the weekend. It was pretty well attended, um, got feedback that people didn't hear about it the first time and was asked if we do a second. I don't know, maybe in the fall, see what's come along. We did get to tour a building where there was, maybe you could call it an affordable housing component. Um, from that tour, we also heard from the residents that showed up that they want to see more affordable housing coming to Center City. So thank you to those who showed up and gave us that valuable feedback. Um, I also want to congratulate the Norman Arts Council. They surpassed their fifteen thousand dollar goal and raised twenty thousand dollars this weekend to continue to support their programming. Um, also, I'm not planning that Center City tour anytime soon, but I did mention a neighborhood cleanup day, and there'll be more information on that. And thank you to whoever left these up here. Um, and we have a blue lighting ceremony, April first, seven P.M. to eight P.M. at Legacy Trail Park, West Main Street and James Garner Avenue for Child Abuse Prevention Month. And so hope to see some more for residents there. Thank you.
Council member?
I want to say thanks to city staff. Uh, you know, you guys don't get a lot of kudos or shout-outs. And I want you guys to know that, uh, when you guys do good work, I want everyone to know about it. So, you know, we had that tornado that came through Ward five. And I want to thank, uh, Sean O'Leary and your crew uh, for everything you're doing out there to pick up the debris and, and helping us get back to the way it was. And I know we're gonna have many more years of cleaning up out there. Chris Mattingly, you and your guys too as well. You know, you're part of this thing. And, and, uh, I want to say thank you for everything you've done. And, and, uh, I haven't called you in the weekend, so, you know, we're on target, so. Darryl Powell, again, city manager. I think one of the best city managers we've had in a long, long time. I want to thank you again because none of this would have come together if it wasn't for your leadership and how you care for the City of Norman. So I want to give a big thank you to you two as well. And, um, I want to remind everyone in Ward five that we have the last run that's gonna start and end on April eighth. Is that right? So get all your storm debris and, uh, construction debris onto the, uh, the streets so the crews can come by and pick it up. And one last note, if, uh, you have a total loss and you are getting paid by the insurance companies, we don't want to pick that up. This is just for storm-related debris, just to get the bulk of the items off your property. And, uh, you know, just focus on that and, uh, the, the construction debris. But any total demolition after the fact here, uh, we just don't have the space and the landfill to do that. So, so be kind to the neighbors here. We, we have so much space and so many man-hours. And, and let's, uh, make sure that we get the initial debris picked up. And don't forget, the second run is gonna end April eighth. And, uh, get everything out there. If there are any issues, you know, call myself or call the city, and we will work with each individual homeowner. All right, thank you.
Council member?
All right, Foreman has some things tonight. Um, our dispatchers appeared to have left, but I just wanted to say congratulations. I'm glad that we're recognizing you, and I'm glad that we will have a building. You will come out of the basement into the light one day soon. So that's very exciting. Um, I want to thank the Norman Arts Council for hosting a panel with Councilmembers Grant and Peacock and myself. We got to talk with them about future projects and collaborations, the hotel tax increase, that type of thing. So I look forward to continue supporting them within our community. Um, Ward six, April twenty-second, is the most wonderful time of year. That's our big trash pickup day for most of us. So get everything out on April twenty-second. If you have some goodies, put them out on the twenty-first, and our neighbors will take them from you. Um, so do that. And then this will be news for our Parks Director, Jason. Hi, Jason. So Councilmember Peacock and I have decided that we would like to host a Sutton Wilderness Cleanup on May sixth. We won't do it on April twenty-second. That's the spring game. I know we're, I, we love the earth, but we also love our football too. And so that brings in sales tax, so I don't mind pushing it off. So didn't mean to steal your thunder, sir, but we'll be talking to you. So look forward to an announcement as we get closer to a Sutton Wilderness Cleanup. Thanks.
Thank you. Council member?
Thank you. Um, I just want to extend a thank you to everybody that came out to Reeves Park on Saturday, including, uh, Mayor Heikola and Councilmember Ball were there. Mayor Heikola got to throw out the first pitch
Yay!
at the new, uh, Norman Forward-funded, uh, baseball fields.
And I made the plate.
Yes.
Yes, it was, uh, right over the plate. A perfect pitch under pressure, so. Um, but it's very exciting to get that, uh, get these fields open. There's many more improvements that will be coming to Reeves Park um, over the next few years. Uh, but this was a really big one. And, um, it's all ready to go for Medieval Fair this weekend. Um, so I would definitely encourage everybody to get out there and check out the new improvements to the park if you haven't seen them, and also to support the local festival as well. Um, I would also mention that really ribbon cuttings of projects are probably the funnest thing that we do, in my experience on council, is getting to finish projects and open them to the public um, and complete a promise that was made. And I just want to encourage everybody to keep on your radar that this year we have several, uh, openings that we're planning uh, from Norman Forward Projects. So we had the Reeves Park Fields this week. And then upcoming later this fall, we're expecting to open the, uh, Young Athletic, Young Family Athletic Center and the Adult Wellness Center, uh, Adult Wellness Senior Center. And both of those, uh, being opened this year will mark a really important milestone with the Norman Forward proposal in that we will have completed or substantially completed almost all of the projects in Norman Forward within eight years of it, of it, of a fifteen-year sales tax. So, uh, there will be other smaller projects that will be left to be done over the next few years. But all of the big projects will be finished by the end of this year, uh, barring any delay, massive delays we don't know about. So it's a very exciting time in Norman. And I would definitely encourage, just again, encourage everybody to keep those in mind and, uh, encourage you to attend those openings when they do happen because those facilities all do belong to the people of Norman. So, uh, also want to encourage everybody again, Medieval Fair this weekend at Reeves Park. And then, um, Earth Day at Reeves Park in April, April twenty-third. Uh, Norman Music Festival is coming up. There's the City of Festivals where we get our name. It's really like March, April, and May is where bulk, June as well, is really a bulk of where they all happen. So very exciting times. There's something to do every weekend in Norman, uh, for the next few months. And then, um, also want to encourage everybody, if you're interested in public transit issues, uh, I would encourage you to check out the City of Norman YouTube channel and watch the replay of our Community Planning and Transportation Committee meeting from last Thursday. We talked about several different projects. Uh, but in that committee, every month, we get an update from city staff on the public transit system, ridership report, an update on projects that are ongoing, like the new transit center and the route changes that we're gonna be making, the micro-transit pilot project that we're pursuing. Um, all of those things are items that we discuss every month. And if you have any questions or comments or suggestions about, uh, public transit or any road construction projects, I would definitely encourage you to contact any of us or me as the chair of the committee, and we will make sure those questions and concerns are addressed. Um, for those that live in the Eagle Cliff area, uh, we did discuss this past Thursday the potential project, future project to connect Cedar Lane West to Jenkins Avenue. Um, due to public feedback after the storm event we had last month, um, a lot of folks that live in that area uh, have been asking me about, uh, another connection, another access point, uh, for that area. And it's a long discussed project. Uh, there are no plans for it. There is no budget for it. It's not approved. But it is in our long-range plan to, to consider it. And, um, there is a detailed, somewhat detailed presentation that I've shared on my social media pages and which you can also watch the replay of on the City of Norman's YouTube channel if that project is of interest to you. Um, and then finally, I'd want to remind everybody about the Neighborhood Alliance. They have a couple of events next week, um, online that you can sign up for. Uh, if you live in a neighborhood that has an HOA or you're looking to try to create one, or a neighborhood association, um, if you have question, legal questions that might come up in an HOA that you're trying to find answers for, the Neighborhood Alliance on Monday. And again, on Thursday, are hosting, um, workshops, a legal issue workshop series for Norman HOAs. So I know that I receive a lot of questions from constituents that live in neighborhoods with and without HOAs about legal issues and dues and all sorts of things, zoning issues. There's a development coming up next to your neighborhood. How do you go about protesting it, or, uh, those types of things? This workshop could be very valuable to you. And it's one of the main reasons I supported, uh, the contract with Neighborhood Alliance is because of, uh, all the questions that I've received over the years from HOAs about a lot of legal issues and things like that. So, um, you can sign up with them, uh, the Neighborhood Alliance of Central Oklahoma, if you're interested, if you and your neighborhood are interested in participating in those workshops. And that's all I got for now. Thank you.
Council member?
No announcements for Ward eight.
Mayor has one thing, it is to reiterate about this Child Abuse Prevention Month. Seven hundred and eighty-five children hurt in this county last year. That's a lot of children, a lot of pain, a lot of other things. And as we sit down there, Mr. Greg Roberts is over here and, and he, you can ask him the questions about it. Join us at that lighting ceremony. We say their names. That keeps them still in our thoughts. And that's very important, at least to me. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is Consent Docket. This item is placed on the agenda so the city council, by unanimous consent, can designate these routine agenda items that they wish to be approved and acknowledged by one motion. If any item, uh, proposed does not meet with the approval of all council members, then that item will be heard in regular order. Excuse me. Staff recommends that items seven through thirty, excluding item twenty-two, be placed on the Consent Docket. I need a motion to place items seven through thirty, excluding item twenty-two, on the Consent Docket. I have a motion and second, the motion on the floor is to place items seven through thirty, except item twenty-two, on the Consent Docket. Council members, you may cast your votes.
The motion was approved unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll need a motion to approve the Consent Docket. I have a motion and second, are there any comments from council regarding any item on the Consent Docket? Hearing none. The motion on the floor is to approve the Consent Docket. Council members, you may cast your votes.
Consent Docket was approved unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. Non-consent items. Item twenty-two. Consideration of Approval, Rejection, Amendment, and/or Postponement of Amendment to one, to number one, prom, uh, things in it, Amendment to Contract K-222356. A Service and Lease Agreement by and between the City of Norman, Oklahoma and Food and Shelter Incorporated, increasing the contract amount by one hundred and sixty-four thousand, four hundred and ninety-seven dollars and twenty cents for a revised contract amount of four hundred and sixty-nine dollars, excuse me, four hundred and sixty-nine thousand, seven hundred and ninety-five, twenty, and, uh, adding three additional months to the contract for the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three emergency winter shelter located at one oh nine West Gray Street and budget appropriation. Councilmember Lynn, you wanted this pulled. Would you like to lead the discussion?
We need a motion.
Oh, sorry. Need a motion to, um, accept or reject this, uh, um, consideration, item twenty-two. I have a motion and second. Um, council, the motion on the floor is to adopt item twenty-two.
We need to get public comment.
Okay.
And council, they get questions.
Okay, I've got it out of control, out of order, sorry. Is there any public comment on this? I saw.
We need, they need to ask questions first.
Okay.
Yeah.
You got me all screwed up.
I didn't.
Okay. Council, uh, do you have questions on this?
Any council?
Council, all right.
Lauren.
Council member, please.
When was this item pulled from the consent agenda?
Councilmember Lynn requested it pulled from the consent agenda.
What time and what date?
Today at?
Six thirty.
Six thirty. Okay, six twenty-five.
Before the meeting.
Yeah, okay. I, I just wanted to know because I asked multiple times, um, anticipating that this item might have been pulled from the agenda um, or from the Consent Docket. I think that, um, we, as council members, owe it to each other and to members of our public to pull things earlier.
Is this a question or is it a statement?
She can make a statement if she wishes.
Okay.
It's just a statement about the process. Um, so we get our agenda at five P.M. on Friday. Um, and so we have time to look over the agenda and pull things off of the consent agenda. I don't, um, have any grievance about things being able to be pulled off of I don't have any grievance about things being able to be pulled off of the consent agenda. I understand why we have that ability. But I do think that it would be, it would behoove us to give public notice or give more, I guess, notice to our public that things are getting pulled off of the consent.
Just Kelly is what about, Kelly, you want to talk?
I'm not sure why this is on Consent Agenda. I've never supported this in the first place. So my bad, Councilman Schuler. I was a little bit busy. I had to look at the consent. Councilmember, Councilwoman Schuler, my God. Anyway, just trying to be correct so I don't hurt somebody's feelings. Anyways, I pulled it because I can pull it. So have it, take it, whatever.
Councilmember Holman?
Thank you. I definitely would encourage my colleagues to consider this in the future because we require the public, a thing that, a process I don't agree with, but we require the public to sign up online beforehand to speak at meetings. I think we should go back to allowing the public to speak in person at City Hall like we always did before. But because we do that, it's important that people know what is going to be voted on specifically or discussed by the council. And when something is on the Consent Docket all weekend and all day Monday and all day Tuesday, the public is going to assume that item is going to be approved as part of the Consent Docket and they don't need to sign up and speak about it in most cases. So I just want to make sure that we all keep that in mind when it comes to pulling things off consent. I'm fully supportive of doing that. Agenda comes out on Friday and over the weekend, you may get constituents that contact you about an item that's on the consent. And it's fully reasonable to ask that that be pulled off. But I don't think it's reasonable to do it right before the meeting starts, not for the public and not for us. But beside all of that, could we, I don't know if Ms. Hyple or anybody else would want to talk about the specifics of what we're considering and see if there's any further questions or not?
She may.
Please.
Thank you. My name is April Dozier. I work for Food and Shelter. At Oversight Committee, we discussed a couple of different options. And what's before you right now is a consideration of the extension of the temporary contract for an emergency shelter that is currently operated at 109 West Gray. We call it a friend's house and that's kind of just for us because that's who stays with us every day. This current proposal is that this extension would be approved on a quarterly basis, reviewed at every 90 days to give us a 90-days notice if we weren't going to approve it, if that makes sense. So you'll see it 90 days. It'll be, have a 90-day working period. And then it might be considered again at the end of 90 days. I, just while I'm here, it's not public comment yet, but I just want to say thank you for this consideration. It's a really important investment. We invest a lot of things in Norman Forward and Quality of Life Initiatives. This is a Quality of Life Initiative for people who don't often have those investing in them. So it's, it's pretty important to us. So thank you. I don't know if there's other questions of me or Anthony from the City Attorney's Office.
Any councilmembers have any questions of Ms. Dozier? Thank you, ma'am.
All right, thank you.
All right. Who's on?
Nobody signed up because they didn't know.
Hey, I did.
It's open. John?
I did. I knew I'd be speaking. There's other people that want to talk.
It's open.
Okay, first off, I'd like to talk about you and all the members here. It's you have to give us enough time to, when something's being pulled off here. You are here for the people, not for yourselves. Okay? That's the first thing I'd like to point out. And y'all need to realize that and give an accurate time for the people to recognize what you're talking about. That's only fair to all the people. The second thing I'd like to point out is this is a good funding. Right now, people are losing their homes because the price of rent is going up so much, they can't be in it. People with accessibility issues, I'm hearing about them. I can't pay my rent. Even with Section Eight, I can't pay rent. And they're being forced out on the streets. These people are trying to help them. And again, it's increasing every day. So this money is needed very badly. Even more so, I think you should open it up with open contract until this affordable housing is taken care of and leave it open. That is an open contract until they get this problem solved. You all get this problem solved. And so making them wonder that they're going to have funding every 90 days? This problem's not going to go away in 90 days. It's going to take a lot longer for it to go away. And if any of y'all can solve this problem in 90 days, I want to hear you stand up and say it.
Hold your tone.
Okay, I want to hear you get up and say it because it's not going to go away. So 90-day fix is not going to be. It should be an open contract until you resolve your issues. Thank you.
Now, no, no back.
Judith Coker, Ward Three. And I'm here to speak in favor of this expenditure. September 21, the city accepted a proposal that surveyed the situation of homelessness here in the city. And it should have started to be acted on at this point. It was prefaced with a message by the city manager that said, "Norman and Cleveland County are facing a crisis on our streets, in our shelters, and in our neighborhoods. Homelessness affects all of us, our families, our neighbors, and our broader community. Rather than to accept what is happening and continue to have hundreds of individuals and families suffer needlessly, we are choosing to dig deep, to evaluate our current system, identify the needs and gaps within the system, and to develop recommendations to consider what resources can be brought to bear to improve our approach to homelessness." Those are the words of our city manager, and I second those unconditionally. The very first recommendation of this proposed program was this. Establish a permanent, year-round, low-barrier, housing-focused shelter with day and night access, thereby increasing the capacity of the system and the long-term housing placement rate of individuals experiencing homelessness. That was the very first recommendation of this very thoroughly researched study. So why would you not vote yes?
Thank you, ma'am. Now, if you don't, I'll have to clear you out. I'm sorry.
Russell, Ward Two. I'll be quick. We have some of our friends here tonight back there. If they want to speak, I would ask that you take the time to listen to them as well. I just want to say thank you to the people that are going to be voting yes on this. Thank you very much. And also, I want to thank city staff that puts this together every 90 days. I'm sure they'd love to have something else to do besides put this contract together continuously. Thank you. Have a good day.
I'd like to speak in favor of this as well. I think we still need to address the rehabilitation aspect. But there are future meetings and discussions for that. Thanks.
Is there anybody else that wants? Oh, I'm sorry. Do you need help? She's got it.
Okay, so my name is Michelle. And I speak in favor of this because currently, right now, I'm homeless. And I live off of $914 a month. I live off $105 in SNAP benefits. My, my last residence was at an HOA property. My landlord was not wanting to make it ADA accessible. I asked for, a couple of years ago, for a bar to be put in my bathroom to be able to hold on to. And his response was, Chris, who's the maintenance man, and him feel that I didn't need a bar. I have a lip about that wide that I could hold on to. The countertop in the bathroom was stone. And if I fall, had fallen and hit my head on that, I probably more than likely would have died because I don't carry my phone on me in the apartment. I could barely get into it. I'm mostly in a wheelchair. And last year, I became an amputee. And I had to basically vacate my apartment because he was not wanting to allow me to have my wheelchair in my room by my bed. He's like, you can walk in your room with all the linoleum tile in an apartment. That is, that is a slip and fall risk for me. And this is a good thing because it helps people like me who are homeless have a place to go and have a, have a, have a bed and have a meal at night. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hi, guys. I'm Paul Wilson, Ward One. I'm in favor of this. I actually live at the complex where she used to live. And I will tell you this, there is not very many ADA compliant units in that building. Now, my landlord, thankfully, she does make most of her units ADA compliant. Mine is not. Luckily, I don't need it. But there are people out there that do. I do support this because I was at the meeting where this was addressed a couple of weeks ago. And I do agree with the emergency shelter in the wintertime. But this is Oklahoma. There is more than cold that can kill. Heat can kill just as bad as cold. And our weather can also kill. We saw that a couple, about a month ago with a tornado. They need a place to go. We need a permanent solution. And just like John said, we should have an open contract on this. Not every 90 days, an open contract until we find a permanent solution, a permanent place. I know they want to build it around Food and Shelter. I'm in favor of that. That should be explored. But I do favor this and I hope you guys do approve it. Not just this quarter, but every quarter going forward until that permanent solution is found. Thanks.
Larry, Del, thank you for the time. Thank you for patience. My name's Sean Kevin Harrison, and I never thought I'd be homeless. Circumstances happen to those of us that don't want to be that way. But there's other people, drug addiction, mental illness, and homelessness. All three have to be addressed. You can't put a Band-Aid on one and think the other's going to get fixed. And the proposal is here is to have a permanent facility that's outside, right here in public and all that. Just a permanent facility that not only houses people and gets them off the street, gets them to feel better about themselves, get motivation, get help to be productive citizen again. And that turns around and goes back to the community. I've seen it happen over and over in other cities. And Norman, right now, is the premier place to do that and stand out to the rest of the communities, to show what we are about. That's what Norman is about, helping people, making them better. I hope you take this proposal and think about it.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, I'm Mary Francis. I'm back. Ward Seven, and that knee replacement is getting better, much better. And I'm here to speak for the proposal. We have a record of excellent service from Food and Shelter in this issue. And the gap analysis very specifically states that, that you cannot address this piecemeal. It has to be addressed as a whole. I believe the words were, without addressing the system as a whole, we cannot resolve homelessness. And that simply means that we need that open-ended contract. You, you can't, as the man said, you cannot solve this in 90 days. And so that's the situation and that's the solution. The solution will take a lot more time. And the solution should be to have an open contract until there is Section Eight housing and possibly some funding from the federal government or grants or for some other reason to help us in Norman with this issue. And of course, it's an issue all across the nation. But we're concerned right here in Norman. And I, I hope that this council will, will take that to heart. It can't be done in 90 days. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Jacqueline Jackson Fabre. And I've been at the friend's house since January of this year. I moved out of my apartment December 31st from Oklahoma City. And through no fault of my own, it was fire, unsafety. So I needed to move. And I decided to try Norman. Years ago, I used to live in Colorado and I was homeless there. But to make a long story short, the friend's house is meeting the reality of things right here. The homeless, the homeless situation, population, issues is not decreasing, it's, it's increasing across the nation. And so a permanent solution needs to happen, I believe, in every city for people that don't have family or not have nowhere else to go. And that was my situation. Although I get a check every month, I'm on Section Eight housing. So I was having my voucher transferred. Even though I get that amount, still yet, I have to look for a place and not having no place to, to reside and collect myself, to prepare to. It, it's just, you have to have a refuge. And so, you know, I'm not just thinking of my condition, but I'm looking at the overall, the people that's also in the same situation and those that may come behind us. And this is the reality. God bless y'all. I think it should be an open contract, honestly, until y'all get a permanent low-bearing shelter for Norman, City of Norman. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thomas Spradlin. Came to Norman two years ago. Had three bone bursa breaks in my neck, frontier drilling. Some dude lied about being a driller on the drilling rig. I told him from the yard, you ain't no driller. Old lady, she said, well, you're hurt now. How good are you for me now? So I lived out on the 10 on the 24th. Lindsay. Every once in a while, I get paralyzed and you can't move or nothing. So I'd get odd jobs. Lloyd Automotive, great mechanic, great guy. Caravan, good people. Schooling and education. I mean, being in Norman University of OU, the rescue missions here don't have education. And I remember hearing my brother being at Oklahoma City Rescue. Oklahoma City Rescue and they had education for him and he got into nursing.
Sir, are you in support of the, the contract being approved?
I'm in support, yes sir. I was just saying, you know, open it up with more than just a place to rest your head, but an education goes further. Thank you.
Thank you sir.
Hello, council ladies and gentlemen. My name is Jacob Vogt. I feel that the, the safety really is an issue that I feel for the homeless people, especially more or less the women who have to, you know, endure what happens when it gets dark. And I believe if, if you're going to shut it down, you know, at least consider keeping it at least open for the women. I mean, I mean, I don't know. You know, it's like, I, I told somebody once, I was like, they're like, they're like, like, why are you so like, you know, like, you know, you're not so scared? I told them, like, I'm the scariest thing coming out of the alley. You know, I got nothing to be afraid of, you know? So it's like, you know, you need to forget that, you know, people take advantage of people, dumb women. It's horrible, you know? I've seen it. In Illinois, I've seen a girl walking with two black eyes and I asked her if she's doing alright. She's, yeah, she's doing okay. You know, it made me cry because I was, you know, seeing what, what happens to people when they, you know, when they, uh, let me just, uh, sorry. Thank you. Thank you.
Marguerite Larson Ward six. So I am in, in conjunction with everyone else, this should be an open contract. And for all of you on city council who have the very intent of voting in favor of this, you are saving fifty-two people's lives and that is a gift. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Clifford Vinaki. And sorry I can't see in your eyes, but I'm waiting for my glasses. Which I'm getting April tenth. Can't wait. I'm here to talk because personally, I've been all over the country. But I was here when I was fifteen and I was homeless. That's when I started here. I just came from Portland and they have a lot more population and people are coming from all over the country to go there. And when I came back here and I did, I went to county and I came out, but I got everything behind me. So I'm proud of that. And I lost my job and my home. And when I found food and shelter, they were, that, that reminded me so much of Portland, Oregon. They helped me out so much more than anyone else has since I was fifteen. And I had an accident and since then, I've been doing great because of them. The support I've had from them is the most support I've ever had. So I just want to say I favor this very much and everything has its good and bad, but as long as you guys try at least five percent as much as we're going to try every day, we're going to keep trying and we'll do as best we can. Thank you.
Thank you sir.
Hello, my name is Michael Blunk from Ward two. Just to go ahead and start, I would, I would ask that we please vote in favor of this contract. We'd love to see that contract expanded even at least out to an annual basis. Ninety-day review seems to be a lot of pressure to keep such an organization and such an operation going on a regular basis. But in general, please vote for this, this contract. This is something I feel should be for everyone on council, should be a slam dunk of a vote. I, you know, I, I remember with the Comanche Shelter. So I, just for some context, I'm a, I'm a social worker here for the state. I work with kids here in Cleveland County. And I remember with the Comanche Shelter, I remember that in different situations, I, I had to basically pull teeth just to find out what the public number was. I couldn't get ahold of anybody over at the Comanche Shelter when it was in operation. And then, but now that, that we have this contract through a reliable contractor, through food and shelter, you know, we, we, we have experts who have worked in this field for a long time. This is something that's being taken care of by reliable people. And it's not fully, as far as I understand, it's not fully our city staff. This is, this is kind of, this is that sweet spot we all look for, right? This is a service is being provided, being paid for by the community, for the community and being run by the people who know how to run it best. And that's, that's what we need. As a social worker, I can tell you that, you know, we, we have a fragile system that tries to support each other. And these kind of community contracts are the things that make that system still as wobbly as it is, stay up. You know, without, without shelters like this, things get worse. I, I work with young people. I work with young clients who have been through the, the issues that this month is supposed to, to have us remember. And the reality is that sometimes those young people, guess what? They turn eighteen. And when those young people turn eighteen, in our, just the way our laws work, magically they are adults at that point. Regardless of what they've suffered through, regardless of what they've gone through, they're adults. They're the age of majority. And the reality is sometimes those folks, because of where they started, right? Behind the eight ball. These young people, when they, when they enter society fully, you know, they don't have every opportunity. Many of those same young people that we were trying to fight for, remember for this month, many of those same people wind up on our streets in our city. That's why we need to have these community partnerships. Because taking care of the young people in our community does not stop when they turn eighteen. It continues. It needs to continue. Everyone who's been benefited by this shelter is a testament to that. So please, I know that all of you work very hard. I know all of you care for this community. Please vote to approve this contract. Thank you.
Denise Seber. And I am in favor of this position. I am living proof in standings of what the services that are offered here for the community of the homeless. I was a year, I'm a year and six months sober from methamphetamine. I am a year and six months sober because of that woman April over there and the services that were offered in this community. I am now about to become a productive member of society. I just got a job over at the Riverwind Casino to become a poker dealer. I am becoming a tax member. I'm becoming part of the people and none of that would have been able to be possible if it wasn't for that woman right there. And the caring community that is all in favor for this bill. Thank you very much.
Hi guys. I want to say thank you and appreciate you all helping us get through this. I mean, I've never been homeless in my life. I've been a alcoholic. Name is Jason Williamson. I've been over here about three years maybe and I'm doing the best I can. I will. As far as these older people and younger people, be very helpful. Promise you. Alright?
Good evening. Cynthia Rogers, Ward four. I appreciate all the folks that came and shared their stories. And I think the thing we, the reality we have to face is that there's no place legal for people to be if they don't have shelter in this town. And if we close and don't extend this contract and have someplace to be, then literally being homeless is a crime. And I don't think that's a tenable situation for us to be in. That's not compassionate to say, you can't be there in the public park and you can't be there and you can't be there. Oh, and we're closing a shelter. We can't, we just can't have that. So not a permanent solution, but it is a Band-Aid until we work on more stable housing solutions and services and education and getting people the services so that they can get out of that situation. Thank you.
Alex Lanvier, Ward two. I don't really know how to say anything. It's already, you know, been said already. Please extend this contract. Human suffering and needs aren't going to stop because this ends. These are our neighbors. They're not being bussed in or anything. I love all of them. I think April's done a great job. Please extend it. Thank you.
April Dozier, Ward six. So we at Food and Shelter have been learning a lot about the science of hope lately. It's a new kind of concept. Comes out of the University of Oklahoma, actually. Dr. Chad Hellman is the scientist researching hope. And what he found through actual scientific research is that the single greatest predictor of future success is hope. It's just simply hope. Doesn't matter what issue you're facing, whether it's trauma or addiction or homelessness, hope is what matters. And so this vote today, this extension of this contract, whether it's ninety days or ten years, is the hope that these folks need to be able to get up every day. So on behalf of all of my friends here, thank you. Please say yes.
Had I known this, I would have rushed up in front of April and let her, let, let her go after me. Sorry. Rob Norman, Ward three. I, I too can be accused of a little eleventh hour work on this. This afternoon, I did send out a written comment email. And sorry it was so late and maybe some of you didn't have time to do it, but I'll summarize some of that right now without repeating too much. Of course, I'm in favor of extending the shelter. And I kind of understand the administrative issues going on after looking through things. Extending it another ninety days is kind of a fiscal year thing. And I would say during the period of time between now and the end of fiscal year, we have time to address this as a budget issue. And think about it and work on it and make it a more permanent thing. Obviously, point one I've made is it's the right and humane thing to do. Oklahoma is a place of extremes. Number two, it is the highest priority on our February twenty twenty-two End Homelessness Action Plan. I'm not always in favor of just study, study, study. But I think that was a great primary recommendation of this action plan. We have kind of half a solution in place and part of that is the evolution. We need to get past the, just keep them overnight and kick them out in the morning and hope they get somewhere, somewhere else. We need to have a more permanent twenty-four-seven type solution. And of course, last but not least, the Debbie Downer is close the shelter. It is an immediate legal liability problem. Dr. Rogers mentions that criminalizes homelessness. I would say actually it doesn't. Because if you don't provide enough beds, enough shelter space, you become unconstitutional as a community. You can't criminalize homelessness anymore. You are faced with a position where the federal courts are effectively, like they did with desegregation a generation ago, they're going to force your hand and make you solve the problem because they're not going to let you do it the way you do it anymore. And some people say that stuff is all West Coast stuff. It's not. It's happening in places like Ocala, Florida, which is very similar to Norman, Oklahoma. It's happening in places like Cincinnati, Ohio, Roanoke, Virginia, Dallas, Texas, where the federal courts and all the circuits are saying, we can't criminalize homeless anymore. You have to provide enough available shelter as a matter of these people's constitutional human rights. That makes your personal opinion about how to fix this problem kind of immaterial. So I just have to, it's the right and humane thing to do, but I kind of have to close with that, that it, it really doesn't matter what you think personally anymore. If you don't fix the problem, someone else will for you. Thank you.
I never get my button pushed first, so I'm excited. April, I just did want to say thank you for bringing up Hope Science. If anyone is curious about that, it's very real thing. And the face of it in the state of Oklahoma is First Lady Sarah Stitt. She's a big proponent of it. She pushes it. So if you're curious, it's a thing. So on Saturday evening, my daughter and I were leaving Brahms on Robinson and Porter. And we're at the stoplight and there was a man sitting on the corner having a fit and fifty to a hundred pill bottles surrounding him. And I just thought, oh man, if, if a cop shows up, they have no choice. I mean, there's pill bottles everywhere. We don't know what it is. It's, you know, it's not safe for him. It's not safe for the public. And then no sooner did I think that, like a cop showed up and the light turned green and I had to go. So where, what happened to that person? And this is, this is not an anti-police thing. It's just, but where do they go, right? Like, how is our law enforcement supposed to handle this? Like, what do we do? We don't have very many good solutions right now. The police can only do so much. And April can only do so much during the business days, you know, during the week that we have open. So we can't pretend like this isn't a thing in Norman anymore. It's a thing in Norman now. So the more stable a community is, the more stable society is. And the more stable the society is, the more stable the economy is. And then you can have growth and prosperity and all these great things. But we will never achieve that and resolve any issues if we don't start somewhere. So I happily support continuing this on for ninety to nine hundred more days. All my days on council, however many they may be. So, thank you.
Just a few things. I just want to note to everybody interested in this particular subject that every month we do get a report about this facility. April Dozier has been so kind to come to our committee, the Oversight Committee, and give us a report that shows how many people are staying there on a month-to-month basis and the breakdown of what type of people are staying there. And we know that that meeting is public. It is open to anybody that's interested. You can watch it on the city YouTube channel as well. And that report is public information as well. But it shows that, you know, roughly a little over forty people a night are kept off the streets of Norman because of that facility being there. And if it wasn't, those forty-plus people would be very likely sleeping somewhere on the streets of Norman, on the sidewalks, in front of downtown businesses, in front of houses, wherever they can find a safe spot. And we know that this facility houses women, pregnant women, vets, disabled, elderly. We know that based on the reports that we've heard, there have been very few problems there as far as the police having to go to the shelter and respond to fights or anything like that. That hasn't been an issue really. And they are having success at getting people housed. Every month, April has told us the number of people in the previous month that they stayed at the shelter for a few weeks. We were able to find them permanent housing and they're out on their own now. We're still staying in touch. We're still, you know, helping them out, but they're not having to stay at the shelter anymore. So it, it's showing results. It's not causing a lot of problems that we were seeing at the other location before. And it's helping a wide variety of our residents to make sure they have a place to sleep at night. So, and again, keeping them off the streets of Norman. And so I would encourage us to continue this contract and, and as our plan, the gaps analysis showed, to continue pursuing more permanent options because I, I would absolutely agree that the courts have made it pretty clear that you cannot, as a city, we cannot make it illegal for people to exist somewhere. And if we don't want them on the sidewalk and we don't want them in the city park, then there has to be somewhere else. They can legally be allowed to exist. And so that's the, the way the law is currently. And so we just have to keep that in mind as we continue to pursue solutions to this issue. And as I keep harping on, and it's probably getting old with some folks hearing it from me, but I've mentioned it many times before that over the last three years, the average rent in the Oklahoma City metro area has risen faster than anywhere else in the United States. Over thirty percent. That's significantly more than the next highest metro area too, I would add. And so a lot of Oklahoma And so a lot of Oklahomans don't have high income. We're one of the lower-income states. We have a high rate of mental health issues. We have a high rate of poverty. We have a lot of folks that don't have a large or significant education, as one of the gentlemen mentioned. And I think that would be a great idea to be able to incorporate more of that into our future facilities. And so that type of rent increase in Oklahoma is really difficult for a lot of folks to absorb. And we're seeing that there's a lot of capable folks that don't have mental health issues, that don't have addiction issues, and do have a job and are trying to do the right thing, but they just can't make it. They cannot meet the rent. They can't pay the utilities that go up. And in many cases, we have folks with Section 8 vouchers that just literally can't find a place at all that's available. There's just not an apartment available that will take it. And so there's multiple facets to this problem. It's not easy at all. There's no simple solution that I've seen. I haven't seen any other city in the United States come up with a silver bullet to this. So it's going to continue to be an issue that we deal with in Norman as our city and metro area continue to grow the way it is. And so I do support this, and I will continue supporting it until we have permanent solutions. Thank you.
Okay. Well, speaking of that sweet spot, I love to be supporting this, but also, as somebody noted earlier, that public-private partnership is pretty nice. April, can I ask you a question? Because I thought I had wrote it down back in our study, our Oversight Meeting, about how long you continue to provide service or check-ins with those people that you provide the transition to people.
Yeah, when we rehouse somebody, whether it's out of a friend's house or any of our other services, we maintain a relationship with them for a minimum of six months. Our preference is a year, because we want to know after the first month that they're stable, and if they become unstable with their housing, that we can find resources to keep them, you know, get them bolstered back up. There was not really much housing case management happening at the other shelter, just because they were really working every day on intake and getting people in and getting them beds. So it's because we're able to leverage the services we already provide at Food and Shelter, plus our partners, like at Central Oklahoma, Care Vans, Thunderbird Clubhouse, all engaged in our continuum of care, we're able to, you know, really provide wraparound services. Yep.
Okay. I would like to say thank you to all of our community members who showed up here, despite knowing if it was going to be on the consent agenda or not, to show support for this. I specifically want to thank our members of our community that are currently staying at a friend's house for showing up here, for your bravery in sharing your stories, and being able to walk into a space that is not always hospitable to you and shows you support of any kind. I just want you to know that I see you, I hear you, and I support you. I think that it is critical, as many other of my colleagues tonight have said, that they are in support of this, that we need to figure this out as a community. I will remind our community members that in surveys that we have done to see what issues Norman cares about, homelessness and addressing this issue, has come up as number one. So we need to continue to discuss resources and avenues to address what is affecting our community, and not just Norman, but our nation. Some of my other colleagues have talked about the Homebase GAPS Analysis Survey, or study that we are operating out of. It clearly outlines the path forward. And one of those things is a permanent shelter for our community. So I continue to support us looking into and operating and getting to a point where we can open a permanent shelter in our community. So I will happily extend this contract tonight, and just thank you to April for all of the work that you're doing in our community.
Councilmember Lynn.
Yeah, I think I'm a little misunderstood on this.
No.
Okay. I can speak loud enough. No problem.
Oh, come on.
On this, I look at the people using the shelter. I look at them the same, they start off my eyes the same as the president. I don't care what station somebody's at in life. I judge somebody on the content and their character and how they act. I'll give you that respect all day long. I try to do that to everybody until they give me a reason not to, and then, you know, whatever. And on this, I don't ever talk about my charitable acts, but I assure you that it's significant, and it's all over the globe. My problem with this, it is not what is happening at that shelter. It is not the services provided. Here is the way I see the role of government. I see it as un-American to reach into my pocket and hand it to you for your living. I find it very American for me to reach in my own pocket and hand it to you for your living. If I decide to do that out of my own good of my heart, that's one thing. But when you have the government coming and getting my pocket to do it, that is where I have the problem. I do not have a problem with anything that y'all are doing or what you're doing. And here's the thing, we had a great Oversight Committee meeting. And in that meeting, I got some information that a significant source of food and shelter and everything, it comes from government funding, taxpayer funding. And when I say, what are you doing with the churches? How many churches you working with? Well, I got maybe 20-something. I didn't get anything solid. I provided just that information, 20-something. And there was data that I could get or ask. But then when you think that there's, you look at the data, and there's about 1,000 or so, that's just what I was able to find, nothing to confirm, but 1,000 or so churches in Norman, and you're only using, only talking to 2% of them, or just this little amount, that is the job of the church. That is the job of the church. And if you're not even going to them and asking, because I've heard Councilman Holman saying, if the church and all these people are not doing it, well, if you're not going to them and you're not working with 98% of them in Norman, I think that that is the path first before you come to the government to ask for money. The church's responsibility. I even offered, and I was serious. Let's go to the churches and ask for money. Before you come to the city, exhaust those resources. You have 1,000 churches in Norman. I don't even know the math on that. That's $4,000 a piece or something like that. I know they couldn't all give that, but there's some that could give a heck of a lot more than that to sponsor that. And that is their role. That is the only, I have no other feelings of anything other than that, that I want it to not be government money, and that is all. I want you to put the effort into going to the churches and asking for their resources. Have you asked them?
Have you?
Sir.
So, that's it.
Councilmember Ball.
Make sure it's on. There we go. All right. Well, as an individual who's taken numerous oaths to support and defend the Constitution of this country, I have read that document many times. And there is not anywhere in the Constitution that guarantees an individual a bed and a meal every single day. If you can show me that clause, I would love to read it. And I'd love to see what happens when this goes in front of the Supreme Court. Now, having said that, I made, I gave my word that I would vote yes to extend this shelter for 90 more days, so I could collect answers. I've had some amazing conversations with people inside this room. I've got a meeting tomorrow at Thunderbird Clubhouse to get more information. So do I know, do I think this is the right way to go right now? I don't know. But I'm in the process of finding out. But I know we can do things better. Because when I go to the library and take my two-year-old up there, and I see 15 stolen shopping carts parked in front of the library, overflowing with refuse, and my kid has to look at that, that is not something that I want him to see. When I drive around my neighborhood and I see tents in the tree lines with nothing but trash, I've walked out there, and yes, I've seen drug needles. I've seen paraphernalia. The cops can back me up. Most of you can probably back me up if you deal with this kind of issue. There are better ways to deal with this, and there are better things that we can do. So having said that, do I have all the answers? No. But I'm doing my best to try to find out. So if anybody wants to send me a letter, you all have every one of our email addresses. Let us know what we can do. Because there are two sides of this. And I know a lot of people that are against the Warming Shelter, and because of this got taken off the consent agenda, none of them are up here to speak about it. So, you know, I'm a little upset about that as well. But, you know, it is what it is. So moving forward, like I said, I want to vote for this this time. In 90 days, it all depends on what I find out and what I see going around the city and how the people who are in charge, like April. I mean, she's been more than forthcoming with everything that she does. And is throwing 40 to 50 people out in the streets because we don't extend this, is that a way to fix homelessness? Absolutely not. But there are better things that we can do. There are things that we can look at, the successes other cities had, and that's what I'll be doing. And I'm looking forward to working with you and everybody else in this room to find an answer that fits for our city. So.
All right. I need a motion to accept or reject contract K22.
We already have a motion on the floor.
I have a motion on the floor. Good. I've lost it. And I got a second. Councilmembers, the motion on the floor is to approve contract K222356, a service and lease agreement lying between the City of Norman, Oklahoma and Food and Shelter Incorporated, increasing the contract amount by $164, $164,497,000. Boy, I just cannot read. Kill. $164,497,20, for a revised contract amount of $469,795,20, adding three additional months to the contract for the 2022-2023 Emergency Winter Shelter located at 109 West Gray Street and budget appropriation. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
Motion passes by a vote of eight to one, voting against. Councilmember Lynn.
Thank you, ma'am. Madam Clerk, I would also like a note to the record, please, permanent record, that next study session we take up, that no, a rule amongst ourselves, that nobody may pull anything after 4:00 Monday, the day before, prior to a council meeting. Next item is item number 31. Awarding bid for the purchase of $26 million general obligation bonds, Series 2023A of the City of Norman, 2023A, let me say that correctly, of the City of Norman, and vote to award said bonds to the lowest bidder complying with the notice and sale and instructions to bidders, or to reject all bids. I need a motion to accept or reject the bid's meeting specifications and award the bid in the amount of 3, that's a percent, amount of 3.435929% from Robert W. Baird and Company as the lowest and best bidder, meeting specifications. I have a motion and second. Mr. Francisco, would you please direct us?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm Anthony Francisco, the Finance Director. I will speak to items 31 through 34. This is approval of the issuance of the second tranche of the 2019 approved road widening projects. This is in the amount of $26 million. We're also the 2023B, which is $13.5 million for the third tranche of the 2021 approval, second and final tranche of the 2021 approval of the street maintenance bonds. We did have a successful bidding process. Bids were received today. As was read to you, Robert W. Baird and Company from Milwaukee had the low true interest cost bid of 3.435929%. You'll recall that previously, we were very proud to be presenting bids in the 1.5% range for these 20-year bonds and the 0.4% range for the five-year bonds. But as you'll see, these are very tight and competitive bids, which means it was a very successful bidding process. So what I want to do is to thank our voters for their continual support of these road transportation projects. I want to recognize and thank our bond counsel and financial advisory teams who are here, who coordinate these on our behalf. And again, I recommend approval of both of these ordinances and bids. I'll be glad to respond to any questions that you may have.
Any questions from council? None from council? All right.
I, we're gonna, I know several of you have signed up for all four of these, but he's considering them all at one time. So I'm gonna start calling to talk, okay? How about Mary Frances?
Each one has to be done separate.
Okay. She's saying we do it separate because the ordinances are different than the, so, never mind.
So we're doing them separate?
Yeah. So you can talk all.
Okay. I'm Mary Frances, Ward 7. And I, I'm appreciative of our finance department here and their understanding of the situations that we have in the city and the need for funding. And I am in favor of this. Thank you. And I'm never going to get used to looking at this council without Brenda.
She'll be, she'll be here. How about John Hi?
John Hi, I'm in favor of this board, too, and I think we should have a lot more bonds like this to help out with the emergency crisis that we're having in Norman. Thank you.
Thank you.
Michelle Harmon? You don't want? Okay.
I want, I want to know what it was for, so I can...
What it's for is we're borrowing money, buying a bond, basically, issuing a bond, I'm sorry.
What was it for?
And this particular one will be, there's ones that's for general construction that are in, they're construction, road construction bonds. And the other, the next one that'll come up is street maintenance bonds.
Okay. I'm in favor of these bonds because I am actually in a wheelchair, and I roll the streets a lot. And I know that they just recently, I think it was not last year, but the year before, they fixed part of 12th Avenue in between Mike Mars Auto and the driveway right there by Goodwill on 12, on Southeast 12. Because I actually called in because there was a section that the sidewalk was so steep it was going down like this. I had to back up in my wheelchair just to get up that part of the sidewalk. And like, there's a lot of stuff that needs to be fixed around town.
We're very interested in finding those kinds of spaces. As you're rolling around, please tell us, because if there's something that impairs you from getting from one place to another, we need to do something about it.
I actually had to roll out into the street today because there was a section of sidewalk that got fixed. But because the signs were up and I couldn't roll through it, I actually go go turn back around, go to the nearest driveway, and then roll out into the street and roll down in, on the lane by the sidewalk or by the roadway, and roll to the next available driveway to get back onto the sidewalk.
Mr. O'Leary has that, he's got it. Thank you.
And I will say, ma'am, that one of the major components of all of these road construction and street maintenance bond projects is to make them fully ADA compliant, and so that's a lot of what we're paying for here.
We were perfectly aware that a wreck between a wheelchair and a car doesn't do well for the wheelchair.
I've been hit three times in the last...
I've been hit once.
Five years, no? Seven years?
Well, either that, all of those things, anyway.
Evan?
I support this. I'm concerned about interest rates and long-term indebtedness, but this needs to happen.
Thank you.
That's it.
That's it? All right. Any final questions from council? No final questions from council. Motion on floor is to award the bid in the amount of, not the amount of, you got me doing it again, with 3.435929 percent from Robert W. Baird and Company. Madam?
Ready?
It says here, call or roll. You don't want me to call or roll, you want us to vote.
No, I use an old thing.
Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. Item number 32, ordinance 0222334, upon first, second, and final reading, providing for the issuance of general obligation bonds, series 2023A, in the sum of $26 million authorized at an election duly called for such purpose, prescribing the form of bonds, providing for registration by designating a registrar for such issue, providing for the levy of the annual tax payment of principal and interest on the bonds, and fixing all, fixing other details, approving the forms of a, the forms of a continuing disclosure agreement and an official statement authorizing executions and actions for the issuance and delivery of the bonds, and declaring an emergency. Because ordinance number 222334 has an emergency section, this item requires a supermajority of seven affirmative votes to pass. Is there a motion to adapt, adopt, or reject the ordinance on first reading? I have a motion and second. This is a companion item to the previous item. Are there any further questions from council regarding this item? Hearing none. The motion on the floor is to adopt the, oh, got people.
Mary, you want to say anything? What about you, John?
It's about streets?
Hmm?
About streets?
Same thing, all four of them are about streets.
Well, guys, John Hi here. You know what? I really for this. You know why I aim for this? Right now, they're fixing my street. Yeah, right in front of my driveway, I can't get up and down the driveway. But one thing I would like to point out to you that you may want to add to these streets is right now, we carry two feet of water in our streets every time it rains, across the whole street. If you would offer these people on these streets that are overflowing like this rain barrels, so they can start giving, give them rain barrels, you would save the damages that the water does to the street. Which would save us major money. That might be just one idea to try to stop the flow of all these raw waters going down all these streets that are overflowing, that's costing us more money to fix. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Michelle, do you want to talk? How about Evan?
Thank you. Evan Dunn, Ward Seven. What is the component about a declaration of an emergency? What is that about?
It's a, part of this, this has an emergency section, so it requires us to vote seven. Normally, we vote five on anything, but this requires a supermajority, which means we have to have over two-thirds, which means seven out of the, out of us.
Okay.
It's not an emergency, it's an emergency for this.
Okay, okay, thank you.
What? Did I say that wrong, Anthony? Okay. Uh, anymore?
Uh, no.
Okay. The motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on first reading by title only. Madam Clerk, will you call or roll?
I'm going to do this instead.
You're gonna do it that way?
Yep.
Councilmembers, you really wanted to call your role.
I don't know.
Councilmembers, you may cast your votes, that's calling the role.
It's Brenda's fault.
The ordinance is adopted on first reading unanimously.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on second reading by, section by section. Motion and second. Motion is to adopt the ordinance on second reading. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes. Maybe?
Ordinance is adopted on second reading unanimously.
Unanimously, excellent. I'll entertain a motion to approve or reject the emergency section 10.
No.
Nope.
Yeah, we got it, sorry.
Yep, emergency, emergency section 10. Is there a motion? I have a motion and second. Motion on the floor is to approve emergency section 10. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes. Just push the button.
Yes, ma'am, yes, sir. Don't get me mad.
Yes, ma'am.
It's passed on second reading.
Are we at second reading?
We're at the emergency section.
Emergency section, passed unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on final reading. I have a motion and second. The motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on final reading. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
The ordinance is passed unanimously, all sections.
Okay, that was a hard one.
Yeah.
Item number 33, awarding bid for the purchase of $13 million, $500,000 in general obligation bonds, series 2023B of the City of Norman, and a vote to award said bonds to the lowest bidder complying with the notice and sale and instructions to bidders, or to reject all bids. I need a motion to accept or reject the bid's meeting specifications and the award bid in the amount, in the, at the percentage of 2.739168 percent from Piper Sandler and Company, and as the lowest bidder, meeting the specifications. I have a motion and second. Mr. Francisco, nothing to say, all right. Are there any questions from council regarding this item? Nothing. This is an opportunity for members of the public, has anybody signed up?
Y'all want to talk? It's just the regulars there, okay?
Yay. The motion on the floor is to award the bid, to award the bid in the amount, at the rate of 2.739168 percent from Piper Sandler and Company. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
The bid was awarded unanimously.
Excellent. Because ordinance 222335 has an emergency section, the item requires a supermajority of seven affirmative votes to pass, and it got it. Let's go to the emergency section and pass it. I'll entertain a motion to reject the ordinance by title only. Is that a motion and second?
Second.
Oh, motion second. This is a companion to the previous item. Are there any further questions from council regarding this item? Excellent. Are there further public comments regarding this item? Excellent. Motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on first reading by title only. Madam Clerk? No.
I know.
Councilmembers, you may cast your votes. You gotta turn it on.
Yes, yes, sir.
I want to vote.
The ordinance is passed on first reading unanimously.
Excellent. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on second reading, section by section. I have a motion and second. The motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on second reading. Madam Clerk? No.
You don't have to tell me twice.
Would you cast your votes, please?
Adopted on second reading unanimously.
What? Oh, sorry, I'm ready.
I voted.
Okay, let's start over.
Okay. Count, are you ready?
Yes.
Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
Yes, please.
Thank you.
It's really unanimous.
We're never having barbecue for supper again. I'll tell you what. I'll entertain a motion to approve, approve or reject emergency section 10. I have a motion on the floor and a second to approve emergency section 10. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
Adopted unanimously.
Was that the emergency?
That was everything.
That was everything, okay.
Okay, now I've got to do the final reading. I'll entertain him, Mr. Francisco.
I heard questions coming up, so I did just want to address the emergency clause and the need for that. As you know, ordinance usually adopted with the first reading being at one meeting and the second and third reading being at the subsequent meeting two weeks later. But the municipal bond market is a very dynamic place, with interest rates changing really by the minute, and so bidders will not hold their bids for two weeks like that. So that's the reason that we need to have the emergency ordinance, such that the ordinance goes into effect immediately, and that's the reason for the quote "emergency."
Thank you, sir. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on final reading. I have a motion second. The motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on final reading. Councilmembers, she beat me to it this time.
I did not go.
You may cast your vote.
The ordinance is adopted unanimously.
Bingo. All right.
Now miscellaneous.
Now miscellaneous. This is an opportunity for citizens to address the city council. Due to Open Meeting Act regulations, council is not able to participate in discussion during the miscellaneous comments. Remarks should be directed to the council as a whole in three minutes or less. Who do we have on line?
Robin Strater.
I don't know if everybody can see these. If you can't, let me know, and I will adjust them. My name is Robin Strater, I live in Ward Five. I moved there in 2011. In 2017, 2016, 2017, the City of Norman received a FEMA grant to do road improvements, raise roads, to install drainage ditches because of the flooding that we had in 2015. In the process of this being done, where I live is on 120th Avenue, just north of Tecumseh. They raised Tecumseh four feet and replaced a double 36-inch tin horn drainage with a four-by-four concrete box, which in itself should be absolutely wonderful if it was installed properly. It was installed eight inches too high. Three minutes is not enough time for me to tell you what I have endured for the last five years of fighting with Sean O'Leary, Tim Miles, Scott Sturts, and Josh Malwicke, trying to get this issue fixed. Their solution was to install a 24-inch pipe on the side of it. It never worked. The only time my property has been dry since that point was because we had a drought this last year. And now every time that it's raining, this water is backing up, and it's backing up, and it's backing up. I am 700 feet from that drainage. That's where my fence line is, and it continues another 300 feet into my property. The picture you see here of my horse, this, these pictures are in 2018, before this started flooding. This is us having target practice in that area. This picture is my horse that suffered from a fungus caused by nasty stagnant water that sets on my property. And I cannot give anybody to fix it. This 24-inch pipe is not going to solve the problem. I am coming to the city council to put charges of negligence and dereliction of duty against Sean O'Leary, Josh Malwicke, Tim Miles, and Scott Sturts. As city council, it is your job to investigate this and figure out why this was not properly done in the first place, and why it was not properly fixed.
Evening, and I'm here today because my currently elected council member has ignored my repeated requests for information, repeatedly ignores my input on matters desperately important to me and presumably to other constituents in my ward. I live in Ward Five. C.M. Tortorello has ignored comments on his Facebook page requesting information, ignored text messages and phone calls from me, including the one that I made shortly after touchdown of the most recent tornadoes to make sure he was okay, and ask if I could be of assistance. I'm addressing you, council, this evening, so that I can ask for your help. Mr. Tortorello has made the claim he is on a mission to keep high-density development out of Ward Five. However, on his most recent donor report submitted on February 6th, the top 10 largest donors, nine of those donors, were the largest donor, a commercial real estate developer and local brick assailant, two real estate developers, a property manager, four real estate agents, one construction company, and a partridge in a pear tree. So even if he says he's not a fan of big density, high development in Ward Five, it appears that high-density developers are really big fans of his. So, he supports high-density development as long as it's not in Ward Five, I believe that's referred to as NIMBYism. So council, I'm hoping that you will help me be heard and have my questions answered. Someone who so adamantly is against high-density development of Ward Five, why are they so well-funded by high-density developers? And if Ward Five is not a friendly place for high-density development, and someone acknowledges that Norman continues to grow in population and size, which ward would you and your donors rather put high-density developments in? Councilmember, these are difficult questions, I'm sorry, they are not difficult questions, and I'm imploring you to help me, your constituent, get answers to them.
In the presence of the council, it's not, this is my first statements about your politics or anybody's politics, this is a statement like a...
I haven't been heard as a citizen, sir, and that is my complaint to the council. It is solely for the council, because my questions have not been answered, and my council member continues to ignore me. He's derelict of duty. Well, you know, you don't have to consider that, but...
Thank you for that, and well noted.
Yes, good evening to you all, thank you very much.
Ms. Lynn?
Just got...
You're getting a good workout on that knee tonight.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm Mary Frances, in Ward Seven.
And I've been missing in action basically for the last three or four years. I developed leukemia, and it is now in remission. And I am then going on to have surgeries for my hip and my knee, and those are really much, much better, and so I'm back. Several folks on this council are brand new and don't know me, so I have a few things I'll let you know about me. I've volunteered for food and shelter, for serving their lunches, and also donated, and donated items for the residents. Whenever they move, they take all of the items with them, and then the new resident has, that has to be furnished again for the new resident. My congregation also furnished a room in the old nurses' quarters, which many years ago we had, and most of the churches furnished a room, and when the people left, they took everything and then we refurbished it. Then I also served for six years in the 80s on the enforcement authority, which they have renamed now as the Election Commission. I served as chair for, I think, three of those years. I think maybe Charlie Schindler or Frank Foreman, maybe Frank Foreman is the one who appointed me or nominated me. And then when I got back to Norman, 20 years ago or so, Cindy Rosenthal appointed me again to the enforcement authority. So there are several things that I have always been concerned about, one of them being transportation. And I am delighted to know that my council member is, has kept everybody apprised of the transportation issues, and in particular, I'm concerned about commuter rail. We need to get commuter rail here, and the current railroad tracks are the ones that commuter rail uses. You don't build a new track that's for light rail. And if we can get commuter rail with two or three stops here in Norman and then get bus connections.
Mark Wagner.
Good evening. Mark Wagner, Ward 5. I'd like to start out with a quote from Edward Abbey. And Mr. Abbey has said that "growth for the sake of growth is the ideology of a cancer cell." Let me repeat that. Growth for the sake of growth is the ideology of a cancer cell. And I know a lot of people say, "We need growth. We need growth. We want to increase our tax base. We want to do this." But growth is not necessarily always good, because at what cost? We're contemplating, or there's being contemplated, a high-density housing complex that's out in Ward 5, adding 841 or 840 units. Do we have the infrastructure for that? I think we need to study because we need to know, we have a finite amount of resources in Norman. And we need to know, there's a certain number of people that that will sustain. If we add 840 more families, do we have more policemen, firemen? What about water, sewers, stormwater? The flooding has already been mentioned. We aren't taking care of our business right now. How can we help other people? How can we help others if we're not be able to support ourselves? So I encourage everyone to think about what happens when we no longer have a water source because the watershed is gone? What happens when we can't take 11 and a half million gallons out of Lake Thunderbird? We're going to have to buy more from Oklahoma City if they have it to sell. And also, what are we going to do when we lose the resource if our state legislature decides to eliminate the grocery sales tax? We're going, what are we going to do? We need to be planning on that. I encourage fiscal responsibility, and let's take a step back maybe and see what can we afford and then what are the priorities within that group? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Michael Blunk.
He's gone.
Rob Norman left too, didn't he?
Yeah, he did.
And Dan Munson's not here. Oh, I didn't see. I didn't see.
Good evening. Hey, so I think first and foremost, I just want to say thanks for approving eight and nine. That was important. And that's kind of what I want to talk about tonight is water infrastructure. We've got a water rate increase coming up in June, and one of the things that I don't think maybe we've considered is fire safety and how water line maintenance can have an impact on fire prevention and fire safety for our community. And so specifically, so if you have a water line that is low on pressure, if you have a fire, like a major structure fire, like an apartment complex, you're not going to be able to put that fire out with just one truck. You're going to have to go refill it. And so if possible, I'd like to have just a really short study session on how line maintenance and fire safety can go together. The second area that I'd like to have that discussion on is specifically in Ward 5. There's a lot of people in Ward 5 that don't think this water rate increase affects them because they're on a well. Well, people in Ward 5 have fires. And there's, it's the Norman Fire Department that responds. And so what happens if you have to refill that wire, that fire truck? Where are you going to do that at? Is it going to be from Lake Thunderbird? Are you just going to throw a hose in Lake Thunderbird and suck up some water? Probably not. Are you going to do that off the well of your neighbor's house? If you have five hours to fill up a fire truck, you could do that. Or are you going to go to the nearest fire hydrant? And so I like to just expand that discussion and how line maintenance and fire safety go together, specifically in large structure fires and fire protection for Ward 5. I've got a few seconds left here. I also want to express appreciation to the line maintenance crew that came into Royal Oaks a couple of weeks ago. They worked their butts off. They had a really, really cold and rainy miserable day. And I have to tell you how impressed I was of the professionalism and the good attitudes on that crew. When you have to be outside in the cold and rain all day long, it's hard to keep a good attitude. And let me tell you, those guys kept a great attitude, so I'm really appreciative of them. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
John.
John, usually I would talk about things that I see on the way up here in its most current events. Well, today I was going down the road and I said, "Hey, those two new houses." And it's in the older district, and why aren't there new sidewalks on them? Well, because, I mean, if we're, I can understand if it's a big field, but we're in the middle of town, and where does the sidewalk's going to start if we don't deal with the new houses that are built? And I'm trying to figure this out. Then, if they're not being, the sidewalks are not being built, where is that money going that they pay to have those sidewalks? You know, the city requires them to pay a certain amount for sidewalks. And where are those, that money's going? Is it going for other sidewalks somewhere else? Or, you know, but why aren't we taking care of the new, you know, that, we got new houses, there should be new sidewalks with them. Then as each house becomes a new house, the rest of them will fall in line. But if we don't even require, when they buy a cornered lot, mind you, who waits on two corners, doesn't even have to have a sidewalk, then when are we going to start? Are we going to do the whole block at one time and wait for all the houses go, and then you get the money and then you do it? Try to find out why and where this money's going. Because it's going in the general fund that we use for other things? Where's that money going that you collect to build those sidewalks? Thank you.
Michelle Harmon, do you want to speak? Paul Wilson.
Paul Wilson, Ward 1. Since we've been talking about water, we're also going to, I'm also going to bring up affordable housing here too, but in a different aspect. The rental, there is, as of right now, 47% of Normanites' rent. Water increase, you increase the rent or the water increase, but no matter what you increase it by, the landlords are not going to just pass it off dollar for dollar. They're going to take advantage. They're going to increase it by at least threefold, if not more. Also, the average cost of a one-bedroom house in Norman is now $750, two-bedroom $950. 63% of all rentals are over $1,000 a month in Norman, with another 9% over $2,100. So that tells you right there, 72% of all rentals in Norman cost over $1,000 a month. That is unacceptable. That means somebody has to be making almost $20 an hour or $21 an hour just to be able to make their rent. I don't know about you, but last time I checked, the minimum wage in the state of Oklahoma is $7.25. Now, there are a lot of companies out there that are paying more, but nowhere near $20 to $21 dollars an hour. When it comes to our homeless that are taking advantage, are taking advantage of all the programs that food and shelter have, when they get a job, where are they going to live? I don't know about you, but they're not finding $20, $21 an hour jobs. They're starting out all over again. And that doesn't take into consideration food, utilities, everything else. So I call for a moratorium on all new residential construction. That is the easiest way to do it, because when you build more houses, it raises the average cost of a mortgage. When it raises the average cost of a mortgage, rent goes up. If you stop new construction at the beginning of this, rent can actually stabilize. Thanks.
Evan, it's your turn.
Evan? Evan, no guitar, sir. This is miscellaneous comments, not miscellaneous music.
I want to say that Catherine Walker might have something to say about that.
Comments, please.
What did you say, Eldred?
Comments, please.
Okay, well, can I sing my comments?
No, sir. I'd rather you did not.
Well, they're both forms of speech.
They are, and you're starting to run out of time.
Okay.
That means no, Evan. No guitar.
Okay.
Say what you want to say.
You're infringing upon my constitutional rights.
Okay.
This is public expression.
Public comments.
Yes, and comments can come in many forms. Songs, poetry, those are comments. Lyrics are comments. What do you think? Should I just play the song? Should I be civilly disobedient?
No, please do not. Please don't. Just tell us.
Catherine, will you please comment on this? This came before council earlier. There was a man who played a flute, and it came to you, and you made a decision. Well, it came to someone.
Okay.
Okay.
We're done. Is he the last speaker? We are adjourned. Thank you, sir.
Oh. Is that fair? Is that fair? I am deeply offended, Mr. Mayor.
Be deeply offended. This is a business meeting. It is not an entertainment.
Talking about bonds.